And then in an answer, you were explaining to us about saying, well, you know, cut people's salaries and cut people's allowances down. This administration when we took over, took away five point four million in fat cap bonuses to chief executives and officers in this council. We don't take any levers off anybody about reducing salaries as well as the executive levels. But the reality is, that's all we gave. What are you all talking about? What are you all talking about doing? Are you not talking about reducing services and investment into neighbourhoods, investment into city watch and other services? And, you know, as I said, you're making an obvious claim about that collection fee of bulky box, we're not charging for bulky box. But I fully support that amendment because it's not even an intelligent amendment. And you know what my real disappointment is? And I would be delighted if I was a councillor and able to move an amendment to your amendment. As I said, the simplest way to save money is to get you four to retire and save the money.
Can you just settle down a second? Just settle down. When you reserve your right to speak, I expected you to indicate when you wanted to speak. Now, that meant, when I called Mayor Anderson, you should have then stood up then and said, I've got ninety councillors to indicate here to speak, they can't be keeping an eye on every single individual. Okay. Oh, so what, shall I? All right. Go on, sir. Go on, sir. But, you know what, it doesn't matter to me now, because this is why I asked meeting, but, you know, in future, for the next amendment, could you please be specific about what you're speaking to and when you're reserving your right, make sure that they know that you intend to speak later. Thank you. Yeah, that's true, because I don't. No. Sir, sir, speaking now.
Okay, thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to just pick up a few points that have been raised and possibly misunderstood by our proposal for a random money council tax. The government has given the council a bit of a get out call, truly, by giving us the option to raise two percent, two percent, three percent, and directing specifically towards social repair. I have to say that the council didn't hesitate in taking up that offer. It's still rising council tax wherever that money ends up going. It's also a first thing for the government, because it means that no council, only a holding referendum, in order to raise above what was legally set for. So I think it's slightly misleading to suggest that we haven't gone over above what we should be setting. I think our nine percent is actually very reasonable, given the many, many years where no council tax rise was given, or very minimal. If we had had a raising at extra two percent or two percent, ring cent to social repair, I have no doubt that this council would have had a holding referendum to go above your one point nine nine percent that we've been restricted to. Thank you. I'd like to thank councillor Christian, please, for the explanation about the review of children's social care. And we aren't saying stop revising practices, stopping improving practices, stopping sharing that exactly. What we're saying is our referendum would give you more money to help you do that and to achieve a better transition, a more safer, stable transition. And I think they go for any of them, while we're suggesting an increase, with money being back in the system. The government's announcement today is a recognition that there's a problem with its social care, and within many elements of what happened in the past, but what they've proposed in their buttons that they've thrown towards this is really, it doesn't do anything to plug the gap that we're facing. So I do think it's really important to remember who the real enemy is, and I swear the responsibility for current financial situation lies, which lies squarely with the government, we are dealing with what they told us to do. In the not-too-distant future, our local funding will have to come from local taxation, either through council tax or bits and threes, we know this. And what we've suggested and what Tom said in his own pro se in moving the amendment is, we are creating a bigger council tax base at this stage, at earlier stage, to make sure that we can actually have some credible income from council tax in future years.
Against.
Councillor Hart.
Against.
Councillor Haley.
And the money that we're raising now can go back into the pot to protect the most vulnerable,
Against.
Councillor Jennings.
Against.
Councillor Jolly.
Against.
as is the aim of this council's administration.
Councillor Jones.
Against.
So I don't think our budget is reasonable.
Councillor Wares.
Against.
Councillor Kelly.
We have very big plans to propose it, and to change that, we cannot see that on the
Against.
Councillor Ken.
Against.
Councillor Kennedy.
Against.
Councillor King.
subject.
Against.
Councillor Knight.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Against.
Councillor Barry Rusher.
Okay, so I'm going to conduct a card vote, please, Chief Executive.
Against.
Councillor Joanne Rusher.
Against.
Councillor Levan.
Against.
Councillor Mayfieldson.
Against.
Councillor McCallie. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Against.
Councillor McIntosh. Councillor Banks.
Against.
Yes.
Councillor McLendon. Councillor Barrington.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Miller. Councillor Beaumont.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Mitchell. Councillor Alastair.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Moore. Councillor Ruthbain.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Morrison. Councillor Brandt.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Lumby. Councillor Brown.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Murray. Councillor Calvert.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Nicholas. Councillor Castles.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Tricia O'Brooke. Councillor Clark.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Anna Baird. Councillor Connaughton.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Rachel O'Beir. Councillor Corbett.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Hall. Councillor Corrigan.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Parsons. Councillor Crofts.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Prendergast. Councillor Crowe.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Prince. Councillor Cummins.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Cadier. Councillor Davis.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Rafford. Councillor Bean.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Reilly. Councillor Dinsborough.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Rasmussen. Councillor Dowling.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Roberts and Collins. Councillor Foxley.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Robinson. Councillor Frankel.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Ross.
Against.
Councillor Francis. Councillor Rotherick.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Roydland. Councillor Simon.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Groves. Councillor Jen Taylor.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Hamrati. Councillor Jeffy Taylor.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Hanson. Councillor Thomas.
Against.
Against.
Councillor Thompson.
Against.
Councillor Tufel.
Against.
Councillor Alan Walker.
Against.
Councillor Sue Walker.
Against.
Councillor Walton.
Against.
Councillor Leighton.
Against.
Councillor Wolfson.
Against.
Councillor Wood.
Against.
Councillor Woodhouse. And Lord Mayor. Thank you.
against with no abstentions. Okay, so we move on now to the Second Amendment. So the Second Amendment is to be seen.
Raise a point forward on this amendment, please, Lord Mayor.
Okay.
Let's just give our citizens a little bit of on this. This amendment actually sets an amount of council tax that should be set, and so I'm seeking clarification on whether that should set out whether that applies to the council element of the overall council tax setting, or the overall council tax amount that should be collected. And regardless of which one it sets out, an amendment which tries to set, should either set out the percentage that is asked for the reduction, or the total amount in each band.
Everybody's got a vote now. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just very briefly, in the budget amendment, you can set it out as an absolute or percentage figure. By the time you get to the budget resolution, you have to have both. After we confirm that for this percentage, the percentage instead of being four point nine nine would be four point seven four. Don't know, the amendment can't be set nine absolute or percentage, it's only when you get to the resolution that you move both.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, just to be clear, in terms of the question, this amendment stands as lawful for the moment. If the amendment is to be passed and therefore becomes a substantive motion and therefore a resolution, we will have to do some calculations before we pass a quick read of that proposal. Do you think anyone except trying to, trying to propose the amendment has such an important meaning already?
I understand when we discuss contracts of employment, they have to go to a subcommittee of council, and the people in the post-holsters have the right to have those contracts negotiated. You cannot, I understood, unilaterally change a person's contract. If there is negotiations, we don't know how long those negotiations may take place, could be free in under six months, or if they're noticed and given, we'll change the contract. So is this appropriate against the council's procedures on things that personal discipline subcommittee, a subcommittee that does this? And does it take account of the needs to negotiate over time, to utilise the saving? Because it would need the people to agree, or the council to give notice of a variation of contract. So I'm very nervous about it, because it's not talking about a department saving, it's talking about specific changes in contract. Now, when we, when we discussed the previous scenario, and I put it into a scrupulous manner, we were previously detected, we were told we couldn't do it.
I'm sorry, I didn't advise you of doing that, councillor. The, the series answer to my councillor's point is too far. Firstly, the appointment set out will be the appropriate body of the council that could execute and implement whatever the proposal is that might be agreed, it's absolutely subsequent. And it will be a process of negotiation, it's absolutely right. And the figure will be specific at that particular point. So to be fair to the, and the purpose of my understanding of that amendment is that they're making an assumption about what might be the case if that was to happen. The more important point of the round of questions is the timing, and we have assumed nine months' worth of saving if this amendment is to be passed, in order to make sure that there isn't a twelve months' worth that's not going to absolutely be the case. So hopefully that's half that.
Okay, can we move on? Oh, sorry, no.
I just wanted to, please, thank Tom for his information, in regards to, because obviously I'm again, like this, you know, to leave a public reason, that cares my staff, I love the day, both of the days today. Or under these arrangements, could be, with regards to my office, I'm entitled to, in the world, a risk of achieving, of not to do that, along other mayors do, I don't. Can we explain also whether it might be a claim? The mayor's office is functioned by fifty cents, would that, did it present any jobs lost? Was that any jobs, John?
Lord Mayor, our assumption in terms of the content of the amendment would be, that would be staffing, and therefore that would be a reduction through a service review of the number of staff in the office. Sorry, but again, to be consistent, that also assumes nine months' worth of staff saving.
The mayor's sitting at the back, though, looking a bit worried.
I found him today.
It feels, they always look worried. Okay, right, we now move to the Second Amendment, again. We see the council, which can. The Director of Finance and the Sources advise us again that the council, the council, that this amendment is lawful. This is a touch and note of appendancy, as so close. Before we call to the amendment, and to assist me, can those who wish to speak, please indicate. Good, Chris, we're ready. Okay. Now, is councillor Mason seconded? Are you reserving your right to speak? Are you going to speak at the end? Thank you. Don't worry, it's okay. Tom, go on. We've got Barry. Barry. Councillor Potts. Jay. And Kate. All of them, sit. Okay, right, councillor Kent, see if you can move the amendment.
Thank you very much, my honourable honourable, my honourable, well, one of me to, it has been, extorted by the mayor of Liverpool, I'm used to that, attacked viciously by the leader of the group, well, that was a surprise, but I must be doing something right if they're both against me, and councillor Kushner waiting there like a oil spring to have a go at me, when he realizes it's actually our amendment this time, and not the group's. But let me just start, we might actually manage to invite councillor Kushner speaking, you never know, I'm dealing with one of the points he made, which is my first point anyway. Let me remind you what councillor Juarez was referring to when he told you to get over it. What he was telling you, what she was telling you to get over, was your continued reference in this chamber, and in that radio you put out on a very occasional basis around Liverpool, Way Tree Rose, when you keep going on and on and on, as the mayor has done tonight, about the coalition. Well, let me tell you, then you are right, you are right, you are right to talk about a coalition. I've been spending many nights out on the doorsteps across Liverpool, and I can tell you that people are talking about the coalition. They're talking about the coalition between Theresa May and Jeremy Corbyn, the obscene coalition, which is coming together to work on Brexit. And if you think that we're having problems with the budget now, I'll tell you, it is a teddy bear's picnic to what will happen as we go through the Brexit process. Sixty billion pounds coming out of public spending to spend on bureaucracy needed, to spend on reparations, all of that money could have been paid to use on social care or support for a whole variety of things. To say Labour members of parliament obscenely being whipped to vote in the House of Commons, actually, not all members of parliament. Let me just take this opportunity to congratulate the three women Labour MPs for Liverpool, the members of parliament for Way Tree, the member of parliament for Hare, for Garsden, and the member of parliament for Riverside, for having the guts to do something about it.
Just stop for a second. Richard, do bring that question, Mr Keith, we have some really good debates here, you just goad them and they're rising to it, don't go to debate, stay calm, Richard, carry on.
Well, we could arise the, the nonsense of the way I came up, where we just sat there like a pig. So let me, let me just say why we're moving a huge amendment today.
Richard, Richard, speaking to the amendment.
Why would you say, why are we not moving?
The amendment.
Yes, I am. I am. The reason we are not moving a huge amendment today is because we agree, as councillor Mombi said, with a large part of the budget being moved by the Labour Party. Not everything, but we do agree with a lot of it. We agree in particular, for example, with the movements being made by councillor Brown, as a cabinet member for health and social care, really important moves to improve and extend the adult care hubs, because that's the only way to solve the pressures on the National Health Service. But really good initiatives like that have been swamped by many of the things that the mayor of Liverpool has been talking about, where frankly, the figures just do not add up. What about the Superdubapoobersuper campaign? Wouldn't, no, I'm not going to do that again. Exactly, I was quite proud of that at first, but what the mayor says, this is a really brilliant scheme, it will pay for itself. No, but, let's, if that had gone in as a budget option, I checked with the Director of Resources, actually, the maximum fine that could have been levied is a thousand pounds, but that depends on the court setting it, and that's not all profit. The slowest council tax, which would be being given in three years, really, is a thousand and seven. If it had been someone in a mansion, it would have been three thousand, so there was a scheme that wouldn't have paid. We've heard from the mayor today, supported by councillor Prendergast, the former leader of the council, that the way to get out of some of these problems is to build executive homes, and he couldn't be further from the truth. If we look, for example, because I've done the figures, at the on gatic of comprehensive side, look at what retro homes brings in by way of council tax. Look there at what would have happened if we had created the two-bedroom flats that people in that area want to move out of the existing homes, and if we had built three-bedroom homes instead of the retro urban sprawl. We would have bought in fifty percent more council tax on the gatic of comprehensive side than going for the executive homes so loved by the mayor in Redwood. Again, another simple example of even if you take your shoes and socks off, you're not getting this right. We moved the council tax season speed to a lottery, which we were going to be told would be announced in mid-January. The lottery became scratch cards, the scratch cards haven't appeared. So time and time again, we weren't dealing with the serious issues, but there are two serious issues that I just want to address briefly now. Mayor Anderson made some very good points about how we've got to change the service delivery for libraries. He should be good at that speech, because he's made the same speech about libraries five years running. And the fact that we have yet, we have yet to actually conduct a major review of our libraries to reshape them to meet the needs of the modern day. It hasn't happened, and that's why our libraries are a threat today, because no one has been looking at the modern future of our libraries. Let's look, you laugh at this one, councillor Mombi, let's look at our parks. We were told by the mayor, and I've no reason to believe that he was wrong, that by the end of this month, we wouldn't have a single penny to keep our parks going. Now, I'm delighted that there are no budget options for taking money out of the parks. What I'm not so delighted about is the fact that we have yet to consider in our parks across the city, with the exception of Croxton Park, which of course has particular circumstances, how are we going to change the way we run, support, manage and fund our parks? That is something that must be done. We've been ready to do it for almost two years, since councillor Mombi suggested to the neighbour services committee, we set up two working groups to look at Coldestones Park and look at Walton, Walton Boulevard. They talked and absolutely nothing happened. So let's have a look briefly at the work that we're moving today. Now, I would be the first to admit that this is the wrong way round. What we need to do now is to accept that things are changing in the governance of this city, the way the city region is running, and the reaction we as a council, along with the other five councils, must make to those government changes. In fact, what I'm moving today is partly what had been moved at some stage by the Labour Party, had Mayor Anderson become mayor, Mayor Anderson. Because I know, as well as you do, that the proposal was not to have three mayors for this city, but to have two, for the mayor of Liverpool to become the city region mayor, and to take the mayoralty out as he led. That was what was going to happen, you know it, and I know it. But what I'm doing is recognising the reality that this city council will not be as powerful as it was, will not need to play the leading part in the city region in the way that we do it. It's, since, well, I, we sat here quietly behaving, and there are people who just do not know how to behave. But I'm finishing now, so I'm not too bothered. I know, the reality of life is that things have changed, since we set up the structure we've got, of the staffing structure, other political structure, things have changed, things have moved on, we have to recognise that, we can do better than we did by recognising the new realities, coming up with a governance system that works, coming up with a managerial system that works, and saying a few hot, in the meantime. Now, I can tell you now, we will be making a number of proposals at the annual meeting of the council, which will actually bring to effect some of these things. My honourable identity.
Okay, right. Rather than edifying, that's probably the worst experience I've had in this chamber in the last year. Okay, councillor Brode.
Lord Mayor, we will not be supporting this amendment. The urgent issue that's facing this council is the drastic reduction in funding, which would lead to many services based on the prospect of having their essential funding withdrawn. This motion has nothing to address this, and I agree with some of the pros saying that they're going to rule them, but my main problem is that this amendment clouds any savings that it does make into a minor council tax reduction. Nothing to do with helping to save any threatened services to the council, rather than just about achieving a small reduction in council costs, which they've obviously calculated will be gross received in their tax reports.
Thank you, councillor Brode. Councillor Kushner, please.
I'm only going to speak out of this amendment. I think the, I think the point I was going to make before, which is a serious point, which is that the role of directors of children's services and adult social care isn't reducing, it's actually increasing. The amount of work that we have to do in terms of adult social care to take on the health agenda, the public health agenda, the step-down provision that would be made, is extending, it's extending that, that reach. And the same with children's services, with relationships that have got to do with adult services with other departments. So I'm not sure who we meant would go in this camera ratio, as we're talking about, because the only one of those two posts that have any statutory provision and responsibility is these directors of children's services. So presumably- but our main problem is that this amendment ploughs any savings that it does make into a mighty council tax reduction. Nothing to do with helping to save any threats in services to the council, rather than just about achieving a small reduction in council tax, which obviously calculated will be flow receive in their tax reports.
Thank you, councillor Corbett. Councillor Cusell, please.
I might even speak out loud to this amendment. I think the, I think the point I was going to make before was a serious point, which is that the role of the Director of Children's Services and Adult Social Care isn't reducing, it's actually increasing. The amount of work that we have to do in terms of Adult Social Care to take on the health agenda, the public health agenda, and the step-down provision, is extending, it's extending that reef. And the same with children's services, with relationships that we've got with the other services, with other partners. So I'm not sure who you meant would go in this cabinet arrangement you're talking about, because the only one of those two posts to have any statutory provision and responsibility is the Director of Children's Services. So presumably that would be the Director of Adult Social Care would go. So it's very nice of you to pat Samir on the back, it looks like you're keeping him out the door at the same time. So I think that what you're suggesting isn't, isn't helpful, and I'll tell you why, because if we lose a grip of what we're doing in children's services, one placement, one placement into residential care will dwarf that figure that you've put in there. So we cannot take any risk in the way that we deal with our children's services. And I would hasten to add, just one of our qualities, to be waiting to see, to say this, you, you have your logic to suggest that the Director of Children's Services didn't give a report about the joint tar fare inspection to any of your members, when your councillor received it through before. I keep mentioning it's the councillor Kelly, but it says he never really sees it. So just for, just to clarify something up, the person at the end of that row is councillor Kelly. Now councillor Kelly, that's councillor Kelly over there. So it'd be nice to get, to receive an apology, that as well deserved, for the Director of Children's Services and all the other people that are working in that department, which are the only more useful thing to do today. So I would just, I would just like to say, I think the thing that you're, the things that you're suggesting are, are things that, and the comments that you made that sing, the closure of Colgate, absolutely, the closure of Beatty Stables, the closure of the Miniature Railway, the, the, the fact that you stand against the investment program would mean that the amount of money that we lose from that would mean we'd have to close down our early intervention program. So there's nothing that you're offering in any serious way that adds to the kind of things and the challenges that we need to do in terms of running the administration in the city. And the only conclusion I can draw from that is that the city is not safe in your hands.
If we all stick to the amendment, we'll be okay. Councillor Corbett, please. Oh, sorry, yeah, come on, either of you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, we can go because I know which amendment I want to wish.
I'm actually not going to be able to speak. Yeah, okay, all right.
I make no apology for going on and on to councillor Suarez either, because I have got over it, and I don't think the people of this city have got over it. I think it's good to hear Mayor Anderson and councillors Mitchell and others talk about what we've achieved in this budget, and I think it's a budget to be proud of, and I know, I will say that in any form. But in addressing councillor Kemp's amendment, I want to remind the council where we came from, where we came from. Back in 2010, and they're going to hate me for saying it, the Lib Dems went into government with the Tories, as Labour took control of our city. At the same time as we walked into town hall, they walked in, scuffled in to number ten Downing Street. And at that time, and throughout the, you know, marriage of convenience, I referred to the Pathetic Alliance as a coalition of clowns. Well, I think I was wrong, actually. It wasn't a coalition of clowns, it was, it was a ruthless machine which changed Britain. And councillor Corbett had been tackling those issues over the past three years. And I don't want this councillor ever to forget, regardless of what it says in this Pathetic Alliance amendment, and I want this councillor to forget that the party of councillors Kemp, Kelly, Maggison and Suarez, get over it, Suarez as we call it, were responsible for many things, and I'm just going to list them quickly. Raising tuition fees, slashing taxes for millionaires and hedge funders, introducing child benefit means testing, giving birth to the benefit gap, and they stood applauding in both the House of Commons and the House of Lords with the, with the, some of the disputable disputes.
Very, very, this would be a great speech for the government. I can't see a doubt, I think we've been speaking. Do you know what, this is an absolutely brilliant speech, but if you'd have to certainly do it at the end, where we've been through the amendments, and actually we can tackle this end record, what I'd really like you to do is to address the amendment at the moment and say that really good speech for the amendment. Could you do that? Because I told Dick, I told Dick, he had to speak to the amendment, and he wanted it. So I'd love it.
Two seconds is long.
Two seconds, is that all we've got?
Yeah.
I've already told him. Gee, Gary, last, last. I've already told you, sir.
It's not that we don't. Simply to say, I just wanted to get a bit about the Adult Social Care, because it is relevant to what was being said about, and so, you know, never forget the rise in food banks, et cetera, and possibly most damaging of all, the massive costs to councils, local councils including our own. So don't even think about moving on, I'm supporting this amendment.
Do you know what, I actually bring councillor Holland in Rocket's borough. I'm going to, sorry, yeah, I'm going for two, right, good luck. So, dear, it's been a hard year, now then, councillor Corbett.
Speaking of eight, this is a member of old mayor, wrong priorities, it's mine to invest to save, it's mine to invest to earn, and it's certainly not to support the Liverpool in our, in our city. What the Lib Dems tend to do, and they've shown in the past, I can remember an example very well, of using money where we did have money in the wrong way. So instead of supporting the most, the most vulnerable in the city, if you remember, Joe, remember they stole the mayor, remember they spent two point four million on a capital culture water stop shop, do you remember? N R S funding and S R B funding, but not only that, they lost half a million in the first year, and an extra three quarters of a million the next year, which are by calculation particularly over three point six, and made a massive difference. The point to that story is that if you're using money well, you should be able to get people into work and you should be able to protect them. The outputs and the outcomes that they had from that capital culture shop in terms of formerly unemployed getting into work was the grounds of two people, two people, the two point four million rising to three point six. So what we've done here, very, very carefully, is not only invest to earn and invest to save, but also, as Joe said before, we've got the three point one into assistance support scheme, which has a direct impact on keeping people out of children's homes and foster care, and in with their own families and fed. We've put three million into protecting the people on the lowest wages, using our council tax support scheme. Again, I think that the only proposal in the country to do that, which was given up, as far as I'm concerned, that's a Liverpool stands alone on that, it's a proud record. And also, we have to top up the discussion, we have to pay them, and we do that at zero point six five. We're now just recently found out that we're short of one point seven million of the government, which is putting us in a desperate position, because that is a direct impact of the benefit gap, and therefore we could have a lot of people finding that without our support, which of course we haven't got a bit more than seven million, they're allowed to pay extra to put them in hostels, which we haven't got, which costs us four hundred pounds a week, and so forty a week in rent. So we've got a problem because of direct, because of what the government is doing. So I just want to say that I'm supporting this budget, our budget, not the amendment, because it's based on the right priorities, and also is the best that we can do in these particular circumstances while we've got this cruel government still in place. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Jane. I've got Steve Bornby, otherwise known as Burritos, here.
Okay, I thought I would like to be able to say, councillor Kemp talks a talk but doesn't walk the walk. He certainly doesn't walk the walk, I remember how Isla did walk the walk during the referendum campaign, when some worked out in the streets, knocking on doors, convincing people who are...
You were enjoying the whole party campaign.
The same way.
You enjoyed it.
But I don't say, I don't say.
Don't, don't bait it, and he won't bait you.
I don't say anything, he talks at all, because I wouldn't think he was ever being guilty of turning on his own attitudes, I just think he talks nonsense at times. And he talks nonsense because he doesn't do the hard yard. And maybe show you and tell you why I say that. Firstly, he talks about Mayor Anderson's initiative around flying. I was talking to a member of our news team, a member of anonymous, who sent to me, honestly, it cost us about a quarter of a million to pay for the publicity team that we've got about dumping Alfred Jones' announcement, right? Quarter of a million, the idea of using the program, acting naturally blitzing in the media. But it's always a good idea to talk about the beer meetings or read the minutes, Richard. And if you read the minutes of the cabinet meeting, of the Mayfair's announcement, you will find, the office is a task for bringing back in the report in four to six weeks on how it'll impact this proposal. So before you start counting the coins or putting bills in on our budget, wait and see what we're proposing. And it's a bit of a thing, the light is, well, actually, we've already made a whole series of payments transfers and loans, which counts for some, for some over. If you'd ever really done it, like we talked about, it's incredibly challenging to do a transfer. I've been involved in youth provision and working on income, councillor Anderson's been involved in it, but you've never done it, you've never talked about it, and you talked, of course, about Alfred Jones' places again and again and again and again, so we'll move on that. So we're doing it, and I still have more. The final thing I wanted to make is about parks, and again, that's, that's my thing. Actually, if you were serious about what you were saying, you would have put in a budget option for a saving by transfer in respect of some of the parks, and then to reinvest that in parks, but you didn't, so I know you're not serious about it. I am serious about it. We've brought forward a cabinet report on Rochford Park, and in the next few weeks we'll be making cabinet reports to look exactly at that issue in relation to Coldestones Park and St James' Park. But it's a lot of work, and thanks to your party, in coition with the Conservatives, we've got, you know, probably a third of the offices in parts of my portfolio that we had when we moved into the council. You're responsible for that, so any delays are down to you. And if you don't understand why this is a difficult part of work, with often a third or quarter of the staff that we've got, then you really shouldn't be elected councillor, certainly not a leader of the group. So we're continuing to deliver innovation in environmental enforcement, and I just wish you would further pay this across the board, because I just want to wish you, yeah, yeah, it would make my day. But we will continue to work on libraries, we'll continue to work on parks, we'll continue promoting innovation and savings in every sector in the city, because the city needs it to do it. And I just wish for once you'd sort of try and do something, Richard, you're an elegant speaker, I think, although I'm my colleague at the start, and you're actually a decent person, I wish you... Just try and do something rather than just pretend.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Councillor Maggins, are you going to? There was, there was, there isn't anybody burning to speak before.
No, no, no.
Right, councillor Maggins. All right, let's have a bit of order, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Well, I would have a right to reply, because you must love me so much that you keep mentioning my name. Well, I just wanted to clarify that my name is actually Huares, yes, just so you get it right in the future. Now, I think, I think you misunderstood, from, from May, that I can stand up here and every single motion that's come to this council, you've, you've mentioned the Liberal Democrats, you hardly mentioned the Conservatives, and it's...